You know, this job, what makes it worth it to me, and I guess government structure sort of puts a big question mark on this, but I'm still at least operating with this premise right now, is that there's real need in North Minneapolis for significant policy change in the city. There's real need in North Minneapolis for perpetually affordable homeownership dollars to be disproportionately spent here, right? So that people can maintain and not be displaced. There's real need for job opportunities that aren't just, that have options, right?
We're rolling. We're rolling.
This is a real, real thing. Real, real, real thing.
None of you have the balls to stop this. I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the wedge neighborhood right now, right now, right now, right now, right now, right now, right now.
How are you?
I'm doing pretty good, you know. I feel like this term has been, it's been a weird term because it's my second term. A lot of changes from my first term to the second term in terms of turnover on the council and my experience level. So I, but it's been a good term. I feel like I've gotten a lot of stuff done, which is the whole point, so.
This is the Wedge Live podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards, and my guest today is Ward Five, a council member Jeremiah Ellison here in Minneapolis. Welcome to the show.
Thanks for having me.
And so before talking to you, I was thinking, you're like one of the few remaining connections to the, at least for me, from my perspective, emotionally speaking, to the pre-strong mayor era.
Yeah.
Thinking about everyone who is gone, Kim Gordon is gone, Lisa Bender is gone, Philippe Cunningham is gone, Jeremy Schrader, Fletcher, gone. Like, do you ever think, like, what is the impact of that? There's a lot of institutional knowledge there. What has been the impact, aside from like the government structure change of having all those people gone?
Man, I mean, that's a really good question. I'll say, you know, I feel like this council has been, a lot of my newer colleagues have been surprising in a really good way. Not that you expect people to not come in and do well, but, you know, people are new. Two years is a short amount of time to get to know this job. And I do feel like they've all, you know, especially of like the quote unquote, the five, I feel like they've come in and they've really adjusted really well. But I think that that's mostly true of everybody who's joined the council. You get some new folks who are technically new, but have a lot of experience or and/or legacy, Kosky, Ringville, you know, all that kind of stuff. But it really bummed me out, if I'm being honest, my first days back, to come back into City Hall, to have, you know, Steve not there and Philippe not there, Jeremy, you know, I know Lisa didn't lose an election, you know, but, you know, she was out and didn't run again. And then having, you know, Cam Gordon has always sort of been, even before I was on the council, just felt like somebody who really knew the nuts and bolts of the place. Loved working with Robert Wansley, but it has been hard to not have that. And actually, it's more been hard that I'm now supposed to, in some sense, be that without having 16 years under my belt, just having the four at the end of the first term.
You're the old guard now.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's kind of crazy to think about.
So we had the settlement voted on, adopted, signed by the mayor with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights last week. What is your take on that? Is this just a case of, sounds good, now let's see the follow through?
On some level, you know, not to give a safe answer, but on some level, everything is kind of that, right? Especially at the city of Minneapolis, you can have a lot of good laws on the books. You know, you take something, that's true for even some of the more quote unquote, low-stakes stuff that we do, you know. For example, Lisa and I passed the renter first policy, which has led to a lot of great, you know, rental protection ordinances, and now every day is a struggle to make sure that we, that the departments have the resources and the understanding on how to enforce those things, or that people have the knowledge of them. So there's always sort of an element of, this is good on paper. You know, to me, the document got broken down in like three ways that felt like really easy to measure. One, does the department have something written down, right? Do they have the right thing on paper? The answer's not always yes. That's a part of why we're where we are. But is it on paper? Because that's step one. Step two, have they been trained on it? Whatever it is, de-escalation, whatever the new policy is, is there training on it? And then three, are people disciplined for violations? And in order for a policy to be real, in order for a policy to be material in any reasonable way, all three of those criteria have to be met. It's got to be written down, it's got to be trained on, and there has to be enforcement. People have to be held accountable for when there are violations. I'll be judging every single element of this document that way. And, you know, I know that the mayor's office will talk about a lot of the stuff in the agreement, it's stuff that they've already began pursuing, but again, it's not about just having it written down, it's about, does it meet those three criteria?
One of the things Mayor Frye said in his press conference afterwards was basically cautioning the public, stick with us through this settlement, let's do the right thing, regardless of how hot the crime politics gets. In response, are we in a good position to take that advice and maybe ignore the day-to-day crime politics? And is he going to take his own advice? You know, where do you feel we are?
Yeah, it's a good question. I wasn't able to watch the press conference, I think I was doing something else, but I have seen some highlights from it, and I saw that clip. Outside of the full context of his statement, that clip sort of felt, it felt a little weird to me because it felt like it was hedging something that I haven't heard, right? Which is that I haven't heard anyone, at least not in North Minneapolis, sort of anticipating that they would sort of point the finger at this agreement for rises in crime, or for anything like that. You know, I guess, if I think about it, I could see somebody creating a narrative that, you know, in agreement like this, a consent decree, which is, I know that we're not supposed to call it that, but, you know, it's a court-enforceable settlement agreement, you know, I could see some people feeling like, oh, this hamstrings the police in some way. I could see that narrative maybe starting to come about, but I haven't seen anything like that. So it felt weird to me, just because I hadn't heard any potential of people looking at the consent decree as a reason for why enforcement action isn't effective, why law enforcement action isn't effective. But if I just take the statement at face value, I'd say, yeah, it's something I agree with. People shouldn't blame some of the fixes to the problem for the existence of the problem. You know, that's kind of how I look at it.
Do you ever feel like Jeremiah Ellison is responsible for the crime surge when it follows a national trend up, but then Operation Endeavor is responsible when the local stats follow the crime trend down? Do you ever feel like that?
Yeah, you know, every day I walk in the office and I look at everything good and bad across the city, and I just think to myself, why did I do this? You know, why am I personally responsible for everything? Not anything good, but just everything bad in the city. No, I, yeah, those are fun narratives. That's politics, though, right? That's, I think, what distinguishes policymaking and government and services from politics, you know. And really, there's no, you wish you could do this job without having to engage both, but no such thing.
So should we be more hopeful that with court enforcement, the settlement will lead to change? I guess we have talked about that already, so you don't have to give like a long answer, but are you more hopeful now than in the past? Because we've had promises in the past. I remember being very demoralized, especially after the '21 election. Like, immediately after that, we just had an election about crime and government structure, and like, will we have MPD? Won't we? What's the future of public safety? And like, Amir Locke was killed in that no-knock raid, and like, something the mayor had, you know, had celebrated was his ban of MPD using no-knock warrants. And, I mean, that, and using a no-knock warrant was why Amir Locke died. It just felt so demoralizing that we had celebrated this change and the change was not real.
I feel you. I feel you. It's hard to say whether I'm more hopeful. I am such, especially after my first term, I think I have developed such a show and prove, right? I'm not going to be too down on something that we're doing. I'm not going to be too up on it either. I just want to make sure that we're doing our daily due diligence to make sure that the policies that we pass are real. So it's hard to say whether I have more hope or not, just because, I hate to say it, but I'm trying to be a watchdog, I'm trying to be diligent in how I'm assessing the situation, and often, hope doesn't really feel like a factor in that, right? At least not with this stuff, right? For me, it's better to have it than not have it, because without it, well, we know what the product is without it, right? We know what we get without it. So if that's the closest thing I can come to hope, I'd say that. Better to have it than not have it. And I also want to clarify, you know, I think that the one thing that I was a little bit frustrated by, that I feel like kind of got lost, is the narrative, at least in the way that it's written about, you know, seems to be that this is something that the state and the city sort of came and did together. This isn't something that the state and the city came and did together. We didn't pass new legislation. This is a lawsuit against us, from the state, for the city's policing practices. They found a pattern and practice of racial discrimination, gender discrimination, and a few other things, and I feel like that is, I feel like that's what this is. This is the, I said this in the council meeting, but this is the culmination of bad things we've done. This is not the culmination of good work we're doing, right? That's why we have this. That's why we have a federal consent decree sort of coming down the pike. But that's, you know, I wish people would sort of see it that way. The state is sort of, in a lot of ways, forcing our hand. Now, if we're wise, we're going to be in a position to welcome that and say, great, we're happy to have our hands forced, here it is, here's how we're going to execute this policy. But could it be undermined if we've got, you know, if all of a sudden, you know, this mayor, or maybe the next mayor, was unwilling to enforce it? We're not there yet. I'm glad, I'm glad the mayor is supportive and seems to be ready to sort of meet the terms of this settlement, but, you know, that could change. And if all of a sudden, the state has an unwilling partner, somebody who wants to fight it, or somebody who's going to be resistant, or there's resistance down the line, all the way down to the rank-and-file level, this thing's going to be tested, for sure. You know, when it comes time to discipline people, the strength of this thing is going to be tested, and we'll see then how it holds up in court.
So I'm looking ahead to the next budget discussion later in the year, and I'm anticipating, maybe the mayor foreshadowed this in his statement after the settlement vote, using the settlement as like a budget trump card, like, you voted for this, now you have to fund it, these are the things I need to make this settlement real. Do you see that being an issue?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I think, you know, when you don't have, when you're not a part of like the power center within City Hall, right, you've got to have, you've got to have the best information. And having the best information doesn't always mean that you're going to prevail, but you do have to have it if you don't have sort of the power, right? And so I think we've got to come in prepared, not just myself, but everybody on the council who wants to see this thing done well. Just pouring money into it is not going to inherently make it do well. We know that, we know that from years and years of policing and trying to solve problems. You've got to be, the execution has to be there. And also, you know, with the department, with having their budget overruns, or, you know, not spending their budget down in recent years, I think the department's really going to have to go out of its way to justify, you know, if they're going to have some kind of excessive increase, why that isn't coming out of, you know, the $5 million, or the, you know, or whatever kind of unspent money they end up having at the beginning of the year. And who knows, maybe that was an anomaly and that won't happen again, but, yeah, they're really going to have to justify why some of these things can't be paid for when we've had years where they haven't been able to spend their budgets down.
I'm trying to figure out what the public safety debate even is anymore, because I think things like the Behavioral Crisis Response Team is kind of universally celebrated as a good thing. And so like, what are the stakes, maybe in your election, in particular, reelection here, in particular, on public safety? What is the argument? What is one side going to do that the other won't? What's the debate?
You know, I would anticipate that anyone who wants to run on a, you know, people are selective about the information that they put out there, people are selective about their targets, right? And so, you know, I'm in my second term, we're coming in a situation where, for example, I've been able to work and collaborate with the 4th Precinct, me, of all people, right? Like, people didn't think that that was going to be possible, that there wasn't going to be a relationship there, but I've been able to work with, you know, leadership at the 4th Precinct to get, you know, the corner of Lyndale and West Broadway under manageable condition, right? In terms of violence, in terms of that, you know, that kind of thing. That certainly bucks a narrative about my position, about what kind of relationships I do and don't have. I still fully expect, you know, anybody who doesn't support me to sort of try to come through with these old narratives about crime and safety, law and order, right? I don't think that anybody's going to let a good meta-narrative sort of get in the way of them in a vote. They're not going to let the truth get in the way of being able to perpetuate something that they think might help them win. So if there was ever a time to put your foot on the gas in terms of this old-school law and order debate, it was 2021, and I think that, yeah, I don't know, I don't know. The debate seems to be, how much do you sort of critique or not critique police itself? And trying to reduce any critique to a reactionary hatred of police. That was true in 2021, I think it'll be true in the future. But I can't be somebody, you know, I'm going to work well with any city service that provides services in my ward, I'm going to build relationships with people that I think are doing good work, but I'm also going to critique, you know, where I think there needs to be critique.
How do we assess the effectiveness of Operation Endeavor? It's celebrated widely on the TV news, for example, but when I look at the staffing chart, and it's not, the staffing issue is not talked about as much as it was during the '21 election, but I have noticed it is still on the steep downward trend, as much as we've like spent on recruiting and put in more recruiting classes, I don't know if they're being filled, but the staffing trend is still down. So like, is it working? And if it is, why is it working despite like staffing being way down? What's your take?
Yeah, I, you know, I'll be honest, you know, aside from being able to talk to Inspector Adams and know what the 4th Precinct's doing, which is something that I do engage in and try to make sure that we keep our relationship close, it's hard for me to judge the efficacy of Operation Endeavor. It's, you know, it's essentially, I don't hear about it in my ward, you know, I honestly don't even hear it directly from, you know, from leadership at the 4th Precinct. I know what they're doing in terms of enforcement, in terms of their best to sort of patrol and keep North Minneapolis happy, but, and safe, but I, you know, but Operation Endeavor, I'd say, is kind of a project of, you know, the Public Safety Commissioner and the mayor, and not something that, I think that most council members are in the loop on the day-to-day of.
How do you think the new chief and the public safety, or the Community Safety Commissioner are working out? Do you work well with them? Are you impressed?
You know, I'd say, the Public Safety Commissioner, I probably still need to build a little bit of a relationship there. I don't know that I have a good sort of read on what his day-to-day looks like, but he, you know, he's a smart guy, and that's why the mayor nominated him. You know, whenever you don't support a department head, you know, and I didn't support his nomination, there's always sort of that phase where everybody kind of has to get over that, right? And so, I know that I have, obviously, but, you know, it's hard to know where you stand with folks. It's cordial, but I wouldn't say that we've got much of a working relationship. The chief, on the other hand, I think, kind of hit the ground, doing his best to build some relationships. Again, he's new, I'm not going to say I know him super well, but anytime that I'm trying to, you know, that I need to talk to him about something, or I need to grab coffee with him because I've got questions, or, you know, I was really concerned about whether or not we were, the council was going to get what we needed out of a presentation that he gave a couple of weeks ago on his staffing needs, and we met about it. And I thought its presentation went pretty well, and so, you know, there's a little bit more of a working relationship there. My hope is that we're just going to have some longevity in any of these positions. You know, first, you want people to do well, but after that, you know, you want people to sort of stay so that we can have a little bit of continuity. But that's kind of where I'm at in terms of public safety at the city. In a lot of ways, I think that I'm trying to take to heart that it's not my purview, right? It's not really within, I don't really have a say as a council member, and so I want to know what's going on, I don't want to be out of the loop on anything, but it's also not my purview, and I've got to let, I've got to let the mayor and the chief and the Public Safety Commissioner sort of sort out what their plans are.
You are no longer among the 13 bosses. And you never, you never actually were.
Never really was, but, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, I think there was a perception of influence last term, and now there's no perception that I've got influence there, or that the council has influence there. That's the only real difference. On paper, the relationship's the same. I wish more people kind of understood that, that on paper, from one election cycle to the next, the council's relationship to law enforcement is the same. What's changed is that we now no longer have really any purview over the rest of the city.
Do you think people get that, though, on government structure? I feel like we talk about it a lot, like, it's talked about a ton, and it's not for lack of talking about it that we don't know it, but it feels like, I don't know, if I'm at a meeting where my council member is there, I feel like, I voted for this person, they represent me, they are at City Hall doing, representing me, and like, of course, they're going to have power. I feel like that intuitive belief that your council member has some powers exercised for you kind of trumps the idea that, like, well, no, that's not how the government works.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that people don't quite understand it. And to your point, you can say it as much as you want, what usually will end up happening is that the person will then sort of view it as a personal failing of yours, right? Well, you don't have power, I'm going to go elect somebody who does. And it's like, well, no, the structure has changed, nobody yet you put in this seat is going to have more authority than I have right now, than your current council member has right now. I do think that there are some ways to navigate this structure. Again, it kind of pushes council members into the realm, maybe almost all the way into the realm of soft power. You know, you've got to build relationships, you've got to have good information, you've got to have good ideas, and you've got to get buy-in. You know, that's more or less how it worked before, but before, you had to build relationships and get buy-in from your colleagues. Now, you know, your task is a little bit bigger than that. You've got to build relationships.
It's worse.
Yeah.
Like, before it was formalized in public, and now it's like backrooms at City Hall, it feels like.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard to, you know, we can no longer go up on the dais, vote on what a department is going to do transparently, and then expect the department to come back and tell us how that work is progressing. We can no longer do that. And so, and so I know that some of this is going to get resolved because we're going to build an alternative route, right? We've got a legislative body, a legislative sort of function now, as opposed to, I don't know what they called it last time, my understanding is that we've always been legislative, but now there's sort of that separations of powers, right? That firewall between, you know, what you can and can't, what kind of conversation you can and can't have with the departments and the department heads. You know, so how do we get things passed, right? We still have good policy that we need to get passed, and we no longer have the traditional ways to go get it done. I think that what you're going to see over the next decade or two, if the council is smart, is, I actually think you're going to see one of two things. You're either going to see the city council look a lot different than, you know, it's ever looked, right? You're going to see, maybe people take it down to part-time at some point, maybe, you know, we're not really discussing that now in a real way, but it feels inevitable if we don't really create the legislative function in earnest for ourselves. And so, and so we're either going to do that, right? You're going to shrink the role of the council, or the council's going to develop its own legislative branch in earnest that we can actually use. Right now, the clerk's office and the audit function are not really robust enough to meet the policy and research needs of the city of Minneapolis. And so, yeah, so our task is going to be to, I think, grow that, so that when we have policies like opportunity to purchase, or rent control, or, you know, any number of policies that might need to get passed, that they don't kind of disappear into a department without any real formalized way to get it done.
So I've heard about hiring extra staff and like, to the audit department, or whatever it's called now. Like, do you feel like building that real legislative branch, whether it's staffing up or doing other things, is that happening? Like, are you optimistic about that?
Yeah, well, you know, I think the real conversations are happening, for sure, you know, not just among council members, but, you know, I think that the clerks and audit are doing their due diligence to sort of picture out what this should look like, what it should look like now, what it should look like 10 years from now, what it should look like 25 years from now, right? That's really where the work has got to start. And so, I do think that that work is happening, but a major reason that that work is happening is because the council, that's what the council has control over, right? And so, I think you're going to see that work move. Now, how fast does that growth happen? How fast do we actually have a legislative, you know, policy and research function that can move at the rate that we need to move? I don't know how far along, how far away we are from that, right? We could be far from that, but the work is certainly happening.
Give me your laundry list of accomplishments over this two-year term, this abbreviated two-year term. Re-elect Jeremiah Ellison because why?
Yeah, um, yeah, this is a good question. I think the first thing that I've been really proud of, that's a carryover from last term, but we're seeing its ability to grow, is the Commercial Property Development Fund. You know, that's not, again, it's not a policy, or it's not an ordinance, but it is a budget allocation and a programming for that budget allocation that I fought really hard for. I wasn't the only one that fought for that. So I was on the council, kind of in that lead position, but the mayor has been really amenable to the fund, and I think been really sold on the fund. I think what it does is it allows for local folks, everyday folks, to have access to buying commercial space, and I have not seen a tool anywhere else in the city or the state that has, I think, aided in creating more diverse ownership of commercial space than the Commercial Property Development Fund. And so, getting that established, showing that there's a real need there, and then getting that, those funds into people's hands so that they can actually own buildings along Lake Street, at 38th and Chicago, West Broadway, I think has been a real big deal, and we've been able to, and I think that the more that we grow that fund, the more we're going to be able to have a real and honest citywide impact on local businesses and on our constituents' ability to own commercial space, which, I don't know how much you know about West Broadway, but West Broadway has historically been owned by like three people who don't live here. And now we're seeing, you know, we're seeing much, much more local ownership generated along West Broadway. So that's one. I think there have been a few big projects in the ward that I've been really happy to see come online. There is, there's a project to build a modular factory, fought really hard, there wasn't sort of a natural fit at the city for how to support a business like that, but once that's up and running, the prospective jobs and the pay that they're going to have there, I think are really impressive. It's going to be able to address a jobs and income need in North Minneapolis, but it's also going to be able to address a housing need in, you know, in North Minneapolis. It's also going to be able to address a housing need, I think, citywide, to have a modular factory in the city, as opposed to just having, I think there's the one up in Owatonna at the moment. You know, God, I really, I'm fasting, I don't want to use that as an excuse, but my brain is a little bit slow, so. A couple of things, one is, in the realm of opportunity to purchase, you know, there was twofold to that policy that I've been working on, that's sort of like the community opportunity to purchase, where the city sort of helps community groups, you know, preservation buyers, you know, get sort of that right of first refusal. That portion of the policy, I think, is going to be done before the end of this year. The tenant opportunity to purchase is probably going to take a little bit longer, again, kind of getting lost in the queue with government structure, but those conversations with staff are still happening, and I know that myself and Councilmember Chik-Tai are pursuing that policy and looking to get that done shortly after we pass community opportunity to purchase. And so, and then, and then lastly, rent control. I came into office really wanting to pursue rent control, not knowing a ton on day one, just knowing vaguely that it was. just knowing that, just knowing vaguely that it was possible through state law. Um, and, uh, you know, working with Cam, working with Lisa Bender, um, you know, we sort of got that first phase of rent control on the ballot. We authored that and it passed. It was one of sort of the few things, one of the few good things that did pass that election. And, um, and we're now in, in a, in a position to have a real policy. Um, my hope is that we're able to get that done before the end of the year so that people can vote on it, um, this November. Um, the timeline on that is looking a little bit dubious. It's looking like that could be hard to pull off, but, uh, I haven't given up hope on that. I don't think, um, that, you know, Jamal Osmond has given up hope on that either. And so we're gonna see. Um, and if not, then we're gonna get that, uh, we're gonna get it finished and ready to go for 2024. Um, but those are some of the things that I think, um, you know, just kind of, in short, off the top of my head, that I'm really proud of to see, to see working and particularly serving, uh, North Minneapolis, uh, in particular. Oh, and then, sorry, perpetually affordable homeownership, the Minneapolis Homes Program. Um, I, I think like 80% of it came to my ward this year. A lot of that was because of the right to return policy. It's kind of an anti-gentrification preference policy, uh, that I worked with staff, uh, to create the criteria for. Um, and, and we're seeing that policy work, uh, and go and be put towards perpetually, uh, affordable homeownership in my ward, uh, and across the city. So, uh, you know, those are some of the things that I think, uh, I'm really proud of.
So what, what is the timeline on rent control? Because I, from experience, we know that if you get it on the calendar too late for the charter commission can just run out the clock. So like, at what point does it have to start showing up on a council agenda? So that you know you get it to the charter commission before they can run out the clock on this year's election?
Yeah, I think a big question is whether or not it needs to go to the charter commission because it's not a charter change. The charter change happened last term. Uh, I know that the charter commission would maybe like to see it and would maybe like to weigh in on whether or not it should go to the ballot, but it is, it is not itself a charter change. And so, uh, I don't, you know, I, I don't think that there's any need for it to be reviewed or looked over by the charter commission. Um, it's not a charter concern. Last, uh, last cycles, um, the, the, the step that got us here was a charter concern, um, but not this.
My premise is totally wrong for that question.
No, but, but, but it's, it's a fair question because people have been cheating it like, I, but, cause it's a bit of a debate at city hall about whether or not it needs to go to the charter commission. And I don't know why it's a debate.
What is the argument that it needs to go to the charter commission though? Because like.
You know, I, because, because things that, that end up on the ballot always go to the charter commission. I think it's a little bit of a, of a, I think we're in uncharted territory and people are a little bit uncertain about how to proceed. Uh, but, um, um, just because everything that's ever ended up on the ballot has, has been a charter concern. This would be the first thing that isn't.
So really the deadline is probably like August, whenever Hennepin County's deadline for like creating their ballots is for the general election. Okay.
That, that's what I, that's what I believe is true. Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what I'm arguing.
Is there movement to get it on agenda, get it this year?
Yeah, there is movement. Um, Jamal Osmond's actually been, um, um, a pretty big champion on this. He's trying to, I think, negotiate between, you know, the council. Um, obviously, you know, there are those of us that wanna see a, a stricter policy. We wanna see a 3% policy. We wanna see very, very limited, uh, exemptions to that policy. Uh, and then you've got the other side that, um, you know, they wanna see a much higher percentage. They wanna see, um, uh, they wanna see sort of the rate of inflation incorporated into that. They wanna see, uh, vacancy de-control, which is a sort of a big non-starter for me. Um, I think it's about, it's about as good as not having the policy at all. Um, um, and so I think Jamal is, is, is probably, he wants to see it. Uh, he knows that rent control is gonna serve his constituents. Um, and I think that he's trying to figure out, uh, what the real points of negotiation are and aren't and, uh, and get something, get something, um, that's ready before the, uh, before, uh, before it's time to get to election.
Okay, here's a very specific question. New construction exemption? Yes or no?
Um, you know, I, uh, I hear the arguments for why no. Uh, I have not been supporting the new, a new construction exemption. Um, I mean, I'm open, I think mostly I think this policy is really necessary. I'm open to having discussion. Um, I think that, I think any policy that passes is gonna have some element of new construction exemption. Um, is that a 15-year, which is kind of standard across the country, is sort of this 15-year exemption? Um, I don't know. Uh, it might be shorter than that, but I think that ultimately if something's gonna pass this cycle, um, it's probably gonna have some, some form of new construction exemption. Um, you know, but, but I guess we'll see. And you know, and there are council members who, um, you know, that, that's their non-starter. For me, it's vacancy de-control. That's kind of my non-starter. Can't be a part of the policy if it's something I'm, that I'm gonna support. Uh, but for other members of the council, you know, um, having a five-year exemption, a 10-year exemption, much less a 15-year exemption, uh, that's a non-starter for them.
So I don't forget when it was, like last month or something. It's a lot of conversation, uh, very emotional conversation about like threats against council members. There was one council meeting in particular that got rowdy in Rainville, Koski and, and I forget who else, uh, Vitale.
Yep.
Yeah, uh, said they were threatened and, uh, in one of the meetings after that, you told a story about how you had become familiar with your second amendment rights, I think was how, how you put it, a reference to.
Yeah.
To gun ownership and.
Yep.
So it just makes me think, why would you even want to do this terrible job that, uh, that makes you, I don't know, take, take your personal safety so, so seriously? It's not, it's not great for your personal life, this job?
No, you know, it really isn't, um, at the moment. And, um, you know, I, I, I'm, I wasn't too privy to what threats. Uh, still, I, I, I wasn't exactly sure what threats, um, Rainville and Koski got, you know? That's not to say they had none, just to say that I'm just not in the loop on, on what those looked like or what the nature of those were. Uh, but you know, I think what happened to Latricia, you know, was, was, was pretty frustrating for her. And, and you know, I, I can understand why Latricia would say this is unacceptable. And I basically agree with that. Does that mean that we need to have increased penalties for anybody who would sort of accost us in the hallway or on the stair, on the, on the escalator? That was the part that I didn't support. I fully support my colleagues being able to say, hey, I've got a personal boundary. I don't think people should be able to cross it. But, you know, things like increased penalties, you know, for, you know, essentially making ourselves a protected class of, I think, the way that council member Wansley, um, put it. Uh, that just felt like the wrong direction for us to go. You know, this job, what, what makes it worth it to me? Uh, and I guess government structure sort of puts a big question mark on this, but, but, but at least I'm still at least operating with this premise right now. Is that there's real need in North Minneapolis for significant policy change in the city. There's real need for, in, in, in North Minneapolis for, uh, perpetually affordable homeownership dollars to be disproportionately spent here, right? So that people can maintain and not be displaced. There's real need for, um, for job opportunities that aren't just, that, that have options, right? Things like modular, things like green energy. Um, these are things that we need to make sure that like folks have access to. And, you know, um, in my opinion, that's what makes the job worth it. I hope it makes it worth it to my colleagues. That's what makes it worth it to me. But, but yeah, it is frustrating, you know, go stand up for what you think is right in your community, to have all of your intentions kind of be in the right place, um, and to have, you know, um, white supremacists threatening to take your life. You know, the one thing that I also kind of took issue with when it comes to sort of quote-unquote rowdy meetings, uh, and I know you don't mean that in any type of way, but people are allowed to yell at us, you know? I mean, uh, people should be allowed to voice their frustration with, uh, their government. And sometimes it's really not personal. Um, sometimes it, it's, it's, it's really not. Uh, people are experiencing these systems that often are a little bit hard to define, a little bit hard to see. Um, but they're experiencing them. The city's a part of that, whatever, the way we administer services, whatever that may be. Um, and, uh, and people reach their breaking points and they are looking at their elected officials and they're not sure whether you are working as hard as you can on their behalf or whether or not you're not working that hard. They don't know whether or not you see them. And so, uh, you know, I often find that, you know, my constituents will come at me hard, especially if they've historically been disengaged and, and maybe, um, you know, uh, don't know me that well. They will come at me hard. I'm not gonna meet them with that same amount of frustration. I think that, you know, unless they are threatening me, right? Unless they are sort of, um, you know, being, I think, way out of step, way inappropriate. Um, I think they're allowed to come at me with a lot of skepticism and a lot of anger and then be met with me having a lot of grace towards them. Hearing them out, understanding what the need is, trying to understand whether I have failed them in some way or maybe their anger is misplaced, but, but they need an outlet. Um, I don't think that there's anything patronizing or anything inappropriate about that. I think it's our duty to sort of maintain that standard. Um, and, uh, and, uh, and so, you know, sometimes I think, I think about the threats that Philippe Cunningham will get, um, or that Lisa Bender would get, uh, and see how they're equated to, um, you know, some of the protests that we might see in chambers. And they're not even the same thing. Um, and they're being equated. And I think I take issue with that. Um, uh, people should be allowed to yell at their elected officials. Um, and we should have the kind of self-awareness and the kind of, I think, thick skin and emotional maturity to, um, to really hear them. Um, and, uh, and I cannot tell you how many times I've had a constituent come circle back and apologize to me. And I tell them, you don't owe me an apology. You get to be frustrated. You get to be angry at the system. You get to yell at me. Uh, you don't get to threaten me, but you get to yell and you get to be mad and you get to question whether or not I care until I show you that I do. Um, and so, uh, and I feel like that threats and, 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 and that, 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 that general anxiety, um, that constituents might have, especially underserved ones, kind of got conflated in that discussion in a way that I took issue with.
Yeah, and the thing about appealing to the state legislature as far as like, how do we manage our meetings? Like, I can remember Barb Johnson having people removed from council meetings. Like, that's a thing that the council president, whoever's running the meeting can do. Like, you, you have disrupted our meeting and you have to go now. That, that, you can do that without appealing to the state legislature.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's my feeling.
Uh, should we talk about the whole Ward Five convention thing with Victor Martinez and all the, the, the sign-ups? It's such a complicated thing to explain to people. Uh, there are accusations of irregularity with the caucus sign-ups. Uh, if you look at the chart, it's like some astronomical number of sign-ups. Like, if you take the, the ones that have many, many shared IP addresses, outnumbers like the total sign-ups that any candidate, candidate in the city has had. So I'm probably explaining that poorly to people who are not familiar with the issue, but like, what, do you have a? Do you agree with what the Minneapolis DFL did last night, which was, uh, basically disqualify the delegates, but also left it up to the Ward Five credentials committee to seat them, uh, at the convention? Did you think that was the right decision?
Um, I, I, I don't think it was the right decision. Um, I thought, uh, if, uh, if the, whatever you wanna call them, errors, irregularities, trends, in Victor's data, looks like everyone else's. If, uh, uh, if, if Victor had turned in most of his paper forms, um, uh, you know, um, even if not all of them, if there had been some element of, of good faith on behalf of that campaign to show that, that, that their work was real, then I could see, you know, I could, I could see, you know, taking that pathway, right? Saying, hey, look, you know, this is still, there's still some open questions here, but, you know, it is what it is. I think yesterday's decision sort of allows, you know, they showed that email from one of his, uh, prospective delegates, uh, who said that she had never heard of the DFL, didn't wanna get emails from them, hadn't signed up for anything, please remove me. Um, and Victor at least claimed on the call that that same woman was on the call and had sort of wanted to recant her statement. Um, he mentioned, he vaguely sort of alluded to that yesterday. And I felt like, well, look, you know, um, essentially the DFL, it feels to me, is giving him, you know, an extra two months to clean up his data. Um, no other campaign is sort of getting that opportunity. No other campaign gets to, uh, sort of recruit new delegates from a pool, uh, of delegates that may or may not have, have signed up on their behalf. Um, I think that, um, I think that the delegate should have been removed, um, and, uh, and, uh, and not been given an opportunity to be seated, but, you know, again, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I try not to put too much sort of emphasis on what's going on with my opponents. I don't get to control what the party does or doesn't do. I do think that the party, aside from the anomaly that we're sort of, they're having to deal with in Ward Five, uh, has done a decent enough job, uh, to, to make sure that there's integrity in this process. I just felt like there was a little bit of trying to hold him accountable, but really letting him off the hook in a major way, uh, that, uh, that puts, that, that sort of puts me and him in, in, in different, uh, he and I get to abide by different rules, I guess. Um, you know, my deadline was, um, was March 14th. Uh, his deadline is, uh, essentially gonna be May 13th. Uh, and I think that there's a part of that that is a little bit frustrating to me, if I'm being honest.
Well, I think the, the lesson for the future is just submit as many names as you have in whatever database you're using and then you can have the extra couple of months to, to bring those people to the convention and have them reinstated.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's the lesson I, I, that's the lesson I'm learning, uh, you know, in real time here. Um, not that I would do that, but, uh, but that seems to be, that would seem to be the smart play if this is allowed to stand.
So there's been a lot of store closures recently. There was the Aldi and the Walgreens, uh, in North Minneapolis. There was the Walmart in Brooklyn Center, which is also an important, uh, you know, source of groceries and other, you know, daily needs for people who live in North Minneapolis. Uh, the Target in Uptown closed, which I was very disappointed in. Uh, and so I wonder if you have a diagnosis for why that is happening? And how to like reverse that? I know this is like an ongoing issue, but, uh, what, what do you think we do about that?
Yeah, you know, it is, it is, it is hard when those kinds of trends come about, you know? Obviously, as an elected, you end up taking them on as one-offs, right? And so, you know, um, anytime you have, especially a grocery store, right? Especially a grocery store in a place like North Minneapolis getting closed, people are gonna be frustrated. They're gonna wanna blame someone. They're gonna blame the Aldi. They're gonna blame the, the, the developer. You know, you've had people blame me, you know, and I've, I've reached out to Aldi to try to figure out, um, you know, what me and the mayor could do to persuade them to stay in that location. Um, but ultimately, you're right. They're making sort of a calculus that's way beyond, uh, anything, um, that has to do with, um, uh, you know, local government here about where their stores are gonna be. These are huge sort of transnational corporations that get to have that kind of flexibility. Um, you know, and I think that, uh, you know, in a, at least in a place like Nor, in North Minneapolis, you know, the, the excuse always sort of is, you know, okay, well, crime or whatever. Um, but I kind of wonder, you know, is, is the corner of Penn and Lowry the worst neighborhood in the country where Aldi exists? And it has to sort of, it, it, it's sort of hard for me to imagine that that's true. Um, it's hard for me to stand at the corner of Penn and Lowry and even, um, feel unsafe there, me personally. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm born and raised here in North Minneapolis, so I'm, you know, that's, uh, um, it's a very familiar story to me. It's a very familiar intersection and corner for me. So, you know, ultimately, you know, I don't know what the story was. I think that the story that they ended up going with was that the developer wouldn't allow them to expand their square footage. The developer maintains that that's not true. Uh, and so, uh, it's hard for me to say, you know, like you mentioned, these other two in different cities. And I imagine that the elected officials there are sort of dealing with the same thing, right? Uh, or ones on the other side of the city, um, constituents are wondering what's going on. Um, and it's not like these corporations are telling the council members what's going on. I think for me, once Aldi sort of, uh, uh, you know, rejected having a meeting with me, um, the only thing left to do is to get proactive about finding a new grocer that can go into that space. Um, and so, you know, I've had some conversations with the mayor about that. Um, I've had some conversations with constituents who have had some ideas about what we should be pursuing. Um, but ultimately, like, I, I'm, you know, I live here and I'm, I'm just as frustrated as my constituents that, that you've got these major corporations bailing. And it's not so much that we care about Aldi or that we care about Walmart or, or Walgreens or Target. It's that, you know, you know, you came and you occupied a, uh, an important footprint in the community. Um, and often some of these stores, uh, historically have sort of destroyed their competition in order to occupy that footprint. Uh, and so it means that we're sort of left with very little options in terms of gro, uh, grocery stores. It means we're left in, with very little options in terms of this department stores or affordable place to, places to get back-to-school clothing or whatever. Um, and I think that's the most frustrating part. Uh, I'd love to see, um, a more local grocer or a smaller grocer who is gonna be committed to the, to, to the community, um, go in that space, happy to work with anybody who's, um, who has an interest and, and who sees a value in making sure that, um, we don't perpetuate sort of this food apartheid that we, that we have here on the north side.
I'm gonna ask you a question that's near and dear to my heart. I've been following this Bryant Avenue, uh, situation, Bryant Avenue South. Uh, they're doing a reconstruction. You will not remember this, but you. will not remember this, but you did approve a layout unanimously in 2021. It's, it's a week before construction is set to begin. Public Works Department has changed the plan, removed some traffic calming, like switched the parking to one side. They've changed the layout. And it's been my impression that City Council has approval over layouts. Have you been following this at all? And like, I don't, it is true that you have the power to vote, vote to approve layouts or not, right?
Uh, that's my understanding. But I'll tell you, especially in, with this government structure sort of conversation, ultimately, what's real is what the institution allows. And so I think that I'm more than happy to follow up. I, I did, I did see a little bit about this, I was going to say online, probably from you, about sort of what's going on.
I've been tweeting. I've been tweeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but I haven't had a chance to talk to my colleagues about it. Is that seven? Is that in Ward Seven?
It is partially in 13 and partially in 10.
Partially in 10. Okay, cool. Yeah, then I, you know, this, that's a conversation that I'm definitely happy to follow up with, with, you know, Lanay and Ayesha about and see, you know, kind of, hey, what's going on here? What conversations were had? But, you know, it's a slippery slope. I mean, if, 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 if we can pass policies, but they don't have to be enforced, and if we can pass layouts, but they don't have to be executed, and we, if we can pass, you know, building specs or whatever, and they don't have to be followed, then I, then I don't know. You know, I don't really know what the role of the council is. And I think that it, it would be very dangerous for us to sort of allow, to set a precedent that, that, that our authority isn't our authority. And we're, and we're in a space where, you know, things should be laid out clear. But the truth is that the government structure change did not put in stone where those separations are, what those delineations are completely. And so some of that work is, work that we have to do as a council. And if we start sort of seeding around that we shouldn't, then I think we're going to find pretty soon that we don't know where the line, where the line is.
Did you read that Fox Night article about the Bell Lofts? And like, the, the framing of the article was basically that the city's emergency response capability is lacking when it comes to like helping people, you know, 20 or so people who've been displaced from, from their apartment when it gets destroyed. Is the city up, up to the job when it comes to responding to cases like that? And like able to work and coordinate with other levels of government?
Yeah. I, I, it's a good question. I, and it's, 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 I hate to say it's complicated because it shouldn't be. But I think the short answer is, is that the city absolutely needs to improve and have more, needs to be more capable when it comes to responding to a situation like that. But here's kind of where I do feel a little bit of a, of a need to defend like the staff, not that anybody's attacking them. But, but rent services prior to, I think, 2019 or 2020, there was no emergency relocation ordinance. Meaning that if what happened to the Bell Loft residence happens in 2018, or maybe in the first half of 2019, there is no recourse. There's no tool. The, the relocation assistance ordinance came out of the work that the department did after Lisa and I passed the renter-first policy. Staff sort of were executing that policy after themselves. Hey, what else do we need on the books to help us achieve the goals in this policy? And one of the things that they came, one of the recommendations they came up with was relocation assistance ordinance. Councilmember Cunningham and I authored that ordinance and passed it. And so when Bell Loft hit, the resources weren't nearly enough. I agree with that. But, but without that policy being passed, I think me and those constituents would have been incredibly frustrated because the response would, from the city would have been essentially nothing. And so, and so, you know, I think mostly that's an indication of just how low the bar is. But I also want to make sure that I'm, you know, acknowledging that, that, you know, at least for the department's sake, as far as rent services go, they have been doing some work to raise that bar and to sort of meet that need when just, you know, what, two, what, three, four years ago, it wasn't a tool that the city had. You know, I've been in touch with a lot of the Bell Loft residents, been, been, you know, been really impressed with the ways that they've continued to show up and advocate for themselves. I know that a lot of folks in similar situations can feel really dejected, can just kind of feel like, you know, I'm going to walk away with as much of, of my stuff as I can. And, and that just sort of is what it is. The Bell Loft residents haven't had that attitude, and they've got some advocates, some community advocates as well, who are, who are really fighting on their behalf to make sure that they, that nobody gets let off the hook when it comes to, to supporting them, you know? And so, you know, folks like Ms. D and her organization, you know, really put a lot of pressure on some of these nonprofits to help these tenants stay in hotel stays for longer than maybe they would have otherwise had to. And I think I've been a really big part of why those tenants have been able to be as organized as they have been. So, but yes, I think the city needs to grow our tools. I think there needs to be more money in the, in that, in the relocation assistance program. You know, if we were to have two Bell Loft situations in one year, or a building like Bell, like, or if we were to have that situation happen in a bigger building, we would essentially not have any, not have enough funds to support residents in the way that we were able to support the Bell Loft residents. Again, the bar was low. I'm not saying that we fully met their need, but we were able to give them some support. And, and so the resources in the, in the relocation assistance program needs to be doubled, maybe tripled, if we want to make sure that we're going to have enough resources to support people. It is not far-fetched to think that pipes would burst in a building in Minnesota in the winter. And so that's what happened there, for folks that don't know. And, and there's a lot of reasons for how that was preventable. I think there were a lot of things that the landlord could have done to make sure that, that the residents didn't, didn't experience that. I think there were a lot of things that he could have done to make sure that, that that building was, was sort of secured and, and safe to live in. Those things didn't happen. And so, you know, we just kind of have to be better about the standard that we hold folks to when they're housing our residents.
Okay, we're almost at the end. And this is the point where I ask you for recommendations. Is there some, is there something you're having fun with? Something that you enjoy that's bringing you happiness, that you can recommend to other people? It could be a book, or a movie, or a video game, something you can recommend to people?
Yeah, yeah. I've been reading a couple of things. I've been reading Mary Oliver. Somebody, a friend recommended that to me. So not a big poetry person, but I think that it's, you know, if you want to get in tune with, with nature, I think that that's a good way to go. I've also been reading this book called Genius in the Shadows. It's about Leo Szilard, and he is one of the physicists who theorized nuclear fission, and in some ways, I think is indirectly responsible for the creation of the atomic bomb. And he's got an interesting story, an interesting upbringing. And, and he also kind of led the movement to, to get Truman to not drop the bomb in Japan. And I think, and he also created, was one of the creators of the Doomsday Clock, which I don't know is something that we all like, you know, pay attention to these days, but for a while was kind of a big deal when it came to, you know, people thought there was going to be a nuclear holocaust. Not that that's off the table, but, but it, but it was a little bit more present in their minds. And I think that he's, he's been written out of history in a lot of ways. And so I've been reading his, this book about him and his life. And, and I've just been interested in the atomic bomb in general for a whole host of reasons. And so I guess to that end, I'll also recommend, if people haven't seen The Fog of War, these are not very escapist things to engage with. But, but yeah, The Fog of War is a documentary sort of interviewing Robert McNamara, who's the longest-serving Secretary of Defense, was, was, was a part of the Air Force, a part of the team who helped drop the nuclear bomb, actually. And then also was deeply involved in Vietnam and, you know, the Cuban Missile Crisis and the Cold War. And also helped invent the seatbelt, which is a weird enough fact about his time working for Ford Motor Company. But yeah, but I think that's kind of where, where my head's been at, you know? Leo Szilard, Robert McNamara, Fog of War, Genius in the Shadows. If you want to go look at, sorry, my dog's trying to say hi. If you want to go, if you want to go engage with some pretty bleak history, and maybe put your own bleak history that you're living through in some perspective, it's a good, it's a good outlet for that, I suppose.
Bleak, bleak book recommendations from Jeremiah Ellison?
[laughing]
How many books do you, how many books do you read in a year, would you say? You gave me three book recommendations. You must read a ton.
No, no, no. The, the, well, Mary Oliver, that's poetry. So you can just kind of like read that at your leisure. And then The Fog of War is a documentary, so not a book. But I do read, but I do read, I do try to read a lot. I don't always read like super serious things. There's this book that I read not too long ago called, If This Book Exists, You're in the Wrong Universe, which is sort of a, is a kind of a comedy sci-fi mystery book. I don't know if anybody's familiar with the book, John dies at the end, but written by the same author. And, and so that's, that's been pretty fun. I'm looking at, I bought like this huge collection of all of the Earthsea books from Ursula Le Guin. And, and so I plan on digging into that pretty soon. But, you know, if I can help it, I'll read, I'll read a book a month, just because I'm so busy. If I was less busy, I'd maybe read more than that. But that's kind of where I try to, try to get through it. And then I'll read a lot of like shorter novels, maybe verging on novellas. So if anybody has, if anybody's interested in horror novels, the Southern Reach trilogy, there was a movie made of the first book called Annihilation. But the book's very different. So if you, if you want to get into some sci-fi ecological horror, you can read Annihilation or the whole trilogy. And then there's this book called, that I, it's really short. I've been recommending it to some people. I've bought it for some friends, called The Ballad of Black Tom by Victor Laval. And Victor Laval actually came out with a new book recently called Lone Women. And it's kind of like a sci-fi horror western type book, which I'm super excited about. But Victor Laval's got to be one of my favorite authors. His book, Big Machine, and, and The Change Lane, two really good, really good books. I would recommend for anybody who's looking for something a little bit more escapist than the atomic bomb.
Okay. You gave us our money's worth with these recommendations. Minneapolis City Councilmember Jeremiah Ellison is running for reelection here in 2023. Thank you for joining me.
Thank you.
This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.